We good to go? All right, so we're going to move to 45 Beechwood Drive modification to definitive subdivision parcel 031.0-005, 034.0-0051, and 034.0-0006 Albacado Limited Partnership. Application for a modification to a three lot definitive subdivision plan. Monica, what do we know?
All right, so I don't know if you recall, but back in last July, this came before you as an, as a application for an insubstantial change. So today we have Phil Christensen here because the board decided that this was not insubstantial and that you would like to see this at hearing. So again, we have a modification to a definitive subdivision, and the purpose of this is to modify the original definitive subdivision notice from August of 2000, sorry, of 1994, which was a three lot subdivision of land, which is known as Beechwood Hill Estates located off of Osgood Street. And that, that, the original notice has a condition, which would be condition 3A, and the plan is included in your pocket. But that condition stated that a site plan needed to be issued in order to allow the release of lots. Since then, one site plan was issued to allow for the development of what is known as parcel, well, it was parcel two originally, and through the A and R process, it became 2A to allow for some parking that was further from the residences in the rear. So we had some, I am pulling that up here. So this is the new A and R plan. So lot three, which is to the upper left-hand corner, had a pre-existing commercial office park. Lot 2A was vacant, Lot two A was vacant, but that was developed into an office building, and right underneath the dotted line was some, was some parking. And currently, lot one A and, and the lot underneath are actually existing and they're vacant now. Those lots have not been developed, and they would, the applicant would like to see the release of, of three of the lots. So you'll have lot one A that they would like to be released, lot two A, which would, which they would like to be released, as well as lot three, which had the existing office buildings on it.
Is anything, um...
It was planned as part of the original subdivision, incomplete, roads, septic, electricity, any things?
The road was then accepted, and all bond money has been released on this subdivision. So they are being held to the statutory covenant, which is actually, all the bond money has been released.
So if, if, if the road's accepted, then there's no reason not to release the lots. Because that's the whole reason why we keep the lots. I'm wondering how the, the building in two A got built without the lot being released.
On two A?
Yeah. Must have been the old planning board that did that.
This A and R actually isn't reflected yet on our D I S system, so we have to get this to the assessors as well. So with that lot, um...
Did we approve the A and R?
Yes, as recorded. So the parking area, they needed more parking, so they shifted land from one A up to two A, and, I'm sorry. Yes.
Is this the one with the, the church?
No, that's what rode up on Orchard Hill, behind the weigh station.
What business is, is there a business?
There?
It used to be, on two A, it was constructed for Elcom, and that's actually the family that owns all the lots. They were component for computers, I believe, and I believe the majority of their operation has moved to the mills. And three A was fully constructed condo units for office park.
Is there any reason why one A never got built?
That's what I know of. I think that Alcántara, when he did it, he had the office park, wanted another place. If you remember, Elcom was on the corner of Bradford Street. He wanted a place to build the new building. And I think, you know, one A was in the subdivision, but they never had any reason to sell it, so they just hung on to it.
Okay.
So Elcom has sold two A to a different, I think it's an engineering firm. The front just has never been developed. And I will say that we often have people that we've directed to go look at that lot because people are looking to open a business and they need land. So I would say it probably would certainly be viable for sale quickly after it is released. But right now, they just can't sell it with it still tied up in that covenant.
So you're, you're all fine with doing this, right?
Yes, and I circulated it between the boards, and no boards had, had concerns at this time with just the, with the, with the releasing of the, from the covenant. So lot one A and one would have to go through site plan review, of course, if anything were to happen. But again, this is just released from the existing covenant.
Anything you want to add?
Yeah, I noticed, just looking, in the draft decision here, it says, so it's allowed the modification to modify condition three A to remove the requirement of site plan review. But three also has requirements of a performance bond, you know, the roadway surety, and erosion control measures have to be put in place before a lot can be released. Should all of that be eliminated?
Are you looking at the draft decision for tonight?
Yes, the draft decision for tonight references three A, but I think all of three needs to be eliminated.
Which number are you citing?
So are you looking at?
Just the first page.
References.
On the third, on the third page where it says three A, are you saying the release, you're now looking to release not only three A, but you're looking for three B, three C, and three D as well?
I think so, I think that's appropriate. Because, you know, you, the surety's already been released, so...
But the only thing we need to modify from the original decision is three A should be struck from it, because it's being held to that. The others were already satisfied.
Okay, as long as that's clear, then.
That's, in my opinion, the only thing that needs to be struck, is the first one.
And you'll see on the page of the draft decision, on number 19, it does say that previous conditions associated with the subdivision conditional approval dated August 2nd, 1994 shall remain in effect.
Okay, so let's, I think we're jumping ahead a little, but, but the, good, good question. Any more facts, information you want to provide? No, okay. Is there anyone from the public that has anything they want to say about this application? Okay.
So I, I just have one comment. We discussed it internally a bit. So the original subdivision approval prior to this A and R was lots one, two, and three. None of those were actually released for the covenant. And so now, I think the proposal is to, they're new lots now, so it's one A and two A. And so I don't know if it should be all five lots, include the original one, the original two, and one A, two A, and lot three. I don't know if it's belt and suspenders to include them all, or just do the one A, two A, which is the newly formed recorded lots.
What is on the request, in the, in the application? Because I don't want to, I'd like to limit it to whatever's in the application, just because that's what we noticed, the public, even though it's here.
Yeah, so it lists on the request by parcel numbers 31.5, 31.51, and 31.006. And in the company letter, hold that up as well.
Well, why don't we just do those three that were noticed, and if for some reason there's an issue, then I think anything from there would, I would probably consider an insubstantial change.
Okay.
You know, at that point, from this most recent modification.
All right. So as is listed on the agenda is by parcel, and those parcels match to our assessing maps today, so that could be the motion.
Okay. All right. Anybody else have anything that they want to ask or say before we close the public hearing? All right, can we get a motion to close the public hearing, Ron?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing on the modification to definitive subdivision, 45 Beechwood Drive.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. So why don't we take a look at?
Thank you very much.
Well, we gotta, we gotta look at the decision. So now we're done with our public hearing. Now we gotta look and see if we want to approve this or not.
I, I thought somebody said that all the bonds have been released on this, right? Could we, is that in the findings of fact, if it's, I didn't see it, but we probably should add that.
So I'll add the date of release as well.
Yeah, okay.
Number 13, just a typo, I believe that's a locust, not the locust. That might not look good with your property, trying to sell the property.
That's what happens when you spell check, or...
Well, I've noticed recently a lot of this, I mean, it's very easy to dictate and type, and I obviously did that here, but you get some funny words when it guesses what you're trying to say.
It's just a new tactic, isn't it?
Anybody have anything else?
Should we note in the findings of fact, anything about the, the lot changes, the A and R is going from one and two to one A, two A, just for the...
That's number eight.
Oh, is it?
Yep.
Oh, it is.
Yes, we should.
I guess we should do that.
Yes, we should, and we have.
Jean, what would be our motion here, do you think?
Your motion is going to approve...
Modification.
As amended.
Yeah. For 40 Beechwood Drive, yeah.
And so when they come in, I'm sorry, once this is approved and the appeal period is up, they're going to be bringing to you a lot release request on a Form J. And that lot release request will reflect what it was on your agenda for, by parcel.
Great, so motion made and seconded, all in favor of approving the modification as amended tonight.
Aye.
Okay, approved, five now. Now you're good.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda, we will go to new public hearing, 35 Dale Street. Application for a watershed special permit under section 4.136, 10.3, excuse me, 10.31 of the North End Zoning Bylaw. The applicant proposes the installation of an above-ground pool with soil cutting and tree removal within the non-disturbance and non-discharge zone in an R1 zoning district. Monica?
All right, so today, we, as we mentioned, are discussing an above-ground, a proposal for above-ground pool located at 35 Dale Street within the watershed. There will be portions of construction in the non-discharge and the non-disturbed, in the non-disturbed zone. Today, we have, we have Gibraltar Pools, as well as their engineer, here to discuss the, the project. And what it will entail is the installation of the pool, as well as some grading and removal of trees in this area. The, the application has been reviewed by numerous, our numerous departments. Police had no concerns, fire had no concerns, health had no concerns. The application did go before conservation last, last week. There was also some questions as to the number of trees that, that were removed. They also wanted to know some more information about any backflow filter that, that would be used. The application has gone before our peer review as well, and there's still some questions that need to be answered. Some of those are the same that conservation had, of course, again, relating to minimal tree disturbance, how the water will be removed from the pool when, when necessary, any type of stone, stone that might go around the pool, things of, things of that nature. So they're still in the, in the review process.
Okay. Gentlemen, you want to introduce yourselves and tell us about the project?
Yes.
I'm Al J. Angelo, Gibraltar Pools, representing the liaisonists, and this is Brian Pomater, PHS Surveying.
Welcome.
What we, the project is, the, first thing I do want to point out is that the homeowner is aware of the, of the environment and what he's doing. He's actually taken pains and chose a product that would be the least disturbing in the product, in the thing. This isn't your typical above-ground pool. To put in a pool normally in a situation like this, an oblong structure, you're going to have to have buttressing. So he's actually chosen a product that's substantially more expensive, that doesn't have the buttressing to reduce the footprint of the disturbance we're going to make. So as opposed to a 16-foot structure that would normally require a 24-foot width to build, we're being able to keep this at the 16 feet. So we're doing everything possible to minimize the disturbance in this. Brian helped place the pool, he can explain the, the placement and the reasoning for it. We've, we are using a close now. I went through conservation last week. The issues they had were just Jennifer wanted us to leave some saplings behind. Obviously, the tree removal, we're putting in a swimming pool. I did observe the trees in the fall last year while they were still in bloom, and a lot of these trees are in, in a state of illness and some are dead. So not all the trees we're asking to remove are healthy. The conservation wanted us to leave the saplings, which we don't have any problem with. There's no, you know, I don't have any issues with that at all, that seems reasonable. The filtration system they were talking about is a closed cartridge, and there's no discharge. When it comes time to having to drain the water, it is a small pool, so we actually have, we're only holding in this structure about 12,600 gallons of water. So to drain to a level of concern, if you had a heavy storm, we'd probably be discharging about 1400 to 1600 gallons of water. Winterizing is the same thing, there's no need to drain the structure, you know, for anything else. If you ever had to drain it after that, yeah, if, if something was large enough to require draining the whole pool, then, you know, we'd use a truck, contain the water that way.
Do we, can, do we have any pictures of the, kind of the pool that you're talking about?
I do, I did bring one.
And do we also have any pictures of the property? I mean, I drove by today, but I think it would be helpful to, to actually see visual pictures.
I believe there's some photos of the property in the, in the wetlands report.
There's some of the woods.
Yeah, that's pretty much it. The...
On the fall, yep. There you go, that's, yeah, the corner of the fencing. He's actually sitting in the pool right now, looking at the corner of the fence.
He's some...
That area.
Can you just go back to the last one?
Can I approach with this? See, there's a new structure of the pool. One of the things that's important is the lack of...
Why don't you start down with...
It's a much more substantial structure than any typical above-ground pool, so I brought along a mechanical driver, too, so you can see what's involved in the building. The only real disturbance we have to do, because the decade is candidly, the real disturbance we have to do is the actual foot on the pool itself.
The, you know, is this satisfactory? I, I don't do a requirement for fencing, sir.
Well, there's always barrier requirements.
The property's fenced.
The yard is fenced in, so that's the...
I can see the photo.
...requirement there already. This fencing, the pool is structurally compliant and barrier code compliant on its own, but in, in this case, the fencing on the pool is secondary because the yard of the property is completely fenced in. The fencing on this one really serves the purpose of a safety fence because it's a walk-in on there.
So John, on this photo, there's a black chamber fence with that.
Right, it's, it's kind of hard to see.
I understand, but all the bricks inside that fence are the...
So it's just within, just in the fence?
Yeah.
All right. And...
Again, you can see that fence...
And where is the stream in relation to, I know I saw it when I drove by, but...
If you go back to the site plan, we have it located on the plan. How many feet are we from the edge of the wetland? From the edge of the wetlands? Yeah. Wetlands, the way we have, the buffers are shown on the plan. How many feet from the edge of the wetland? That's, that's what I'm trying to find out.
I'm sorry, the, did you say?
How far is the limit of work, first the pool, then the limit of work from the edge of the wetland? Minimum 50 meters, is true.
Yeah, I saw you, I was putting up a picture.
That, it's a, at the narrowest point, it's 50, or is it... Yeah, the, the grading to regrade the site back in will hit the 50-foot buffer. But the pool itself is further, is... Well, that's what I'm trying, I'm trying to get... The structure itself is... I mean, you... 55, 58 feet away. And what does, remind me again what the zoning says exactly?
We're looking at, okay, so this lot was created prior to 1994. So they are here because it is closer than the 100, 100 feet where this was located.
Can you scroll into where the proposed limit of work is?
But, yeah, I, I'm trying to get at...
Yep, so...
The, I just forgot off the top, I had what the non-disturbed zone is in there, and that you can't touch anything inside that.
Trying, making mistakes.
25.
See the proposed Waddo's limit of work? On the lower left-hand side? So the 50 foot is right above, see where the S is on proposed? That's the 50-foot mark, and if you look below it, then you'll see the 25 mark. So when you say the limit of work...
I guess what I'm just, I'll go look up, and what does the zoning bylaw say, I guess? That's what I'm trying to get at.
For the different zones, the edge of the wetland, 100 feet, is the non-disturbance zone. So the whole thing is within the non-disturbance, other than the very top corner of that.
Right, okay. That's fine.
But, but the limit of work is about only 35 feet or so from the wetland, right? The grading piece of it. Yeah.
Well, I, I, I guess my, my point is, what statutorily, under the bylaw... Well, I, I, I guess my, my point is, what statutorily, under the bylaw, is the limit of how far you can go?
It's by special permit up to 100 feet. That's why they're here.
Is it, what's the inside limit?
After 94, there's a conservation zone, that you can't do anything within 75 feet, but that's the lots created after 94.
So what about lots before? Is there any? I just don't remember off the top of my head.
But this type of scope, you need a special permit if you're within 100 feet.
But if, if it's a permanent structure, it's got to be... I mean, that's, it's, I'm trying to get some idea of how aggressive this is compared to, to our bylaw, that's all.
This did go before, is going before zoning on the eighth because the inspector of buildings had determined that this would be considered a structure.
Right, so it does require variance. That was, that was...
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Next stop.
One thing that...
So how does that, any of it have to do with soil conditions, soil for topography?
Variants on the ZBA.
Yep.
Order of conditions from CONCOM.
Conservation.
And a special permit from us.
Yeah.
It's a lot for a pool.
Far and above ground pool, yes.
Is it going to be heated?
No.
No.
I'm sure it's worth it.
But then again, it is opposed to the tributary to the like.
No, I'm just saying, it's not, well, I'm not...
We understand that, it's...
I drove by that today, and it was just interesting because I was with my, my son, who's nine, and I was just telling him about it, and he's like, oh, which one? He's like, oh, do you see that stream there? Like, I mean, it's, it's not like a little tiny just drop. You can really, you really notice...
Well, right now, you, it's a stream.
Right now, yeah, right now.
Exactly. I mean, we are in runoff season. It's a stream. Come in the middle of summer?
You need a pool.
It'll be dry. It's, I, I live in Groveland. I'm in that area all the time. I do a lot of work. It's, it's dry in the summer. It's funny. But, yeah, it's, it's running right now. But I understand.
Okay.
One thing I wanted to point out was our consultant did kind of look at the disturbance that was going to, that possibly occur due to the, the pool, and he did suggest another location of the site and wanted me to present that as well. This would be further away from this, slightly further away from the stream and also require less tree cut. So it's something that he wanted me to bring before the board.
And are you guys prepared to talk about that today, or do you want...
No, we can talk about that. The, it's not a more practical place to put the pool. We put the pool, we placed this pool in the absolute case, place of least disturbance. It would require less tree cutting to put it over there, but it'd be a much bigger dig.
Yeah. More slopes. More disturbance all around for the environment, actually, to cut it in.
Like, bigger dig, do you mean deeper dig or bigger footprint of the dig?
Cut, so you get a level of pool itself. So you're going to, you have to cut in the top side and level up the bottom side, so you know, it's a cut-fill atmosphere. So what we're doing, we have a very minimal cut-fill where we are right now. We're moving maybe foot, foot and a half of material and doing the same on the other side and then blending it back in. Where they propose, that yard, it's not very flat at all. It cuts, it slows down tremendously, so we have to put that pool in, you're going to cut down three, four feet and have to build back up the bottom side and then blend that back in. So you're going to have a larger slope cutting back into, you know, the wetland disturbance area. So it is a, you're pushing it away from the wetland a bit, but you're disturbing a lot more material and causing more disturbance in the long run than you would where we actually have it.
It's a, it's a bit of a precarious placement of the pool. It really is. Where we've placed it, it's not going to have much effect on the grade at all. What we'll be doing is, like you said, it's about a foot to a foot and a half, we're going to be cutting that straight in and then grading out again, continuing the grade when we put it back around to the pool, following the natural grade of the land already. So we're not going to really affect much this way, and it's not really going to change or alter the grading, the area that much at all.
As you can see, the, we have very minimal new contouring grades on the plan, as you can see with the bold grades. They're not, we're not moving much material. And we, the reason we chose that was because of the minimal disturbance of the area. We didn't want to cut into the landscape. We wanted to make it nice and smooth and blooded, make it easy for itself.
So you'd be prepared to respond to the peer review consultant with that, and then you guys could work it out and...
Well, I mean, he, he was just making recommendations.
Right, right.
He thought that that would be a better area?
Well, we'd like, we, we would certainly want to have a response. I mean, you've given us a better response than writing to them would be, we'd certainly like to see that. Even if, even if you disagree, we'd at least like to see that to be able to consider. What kind of equipment would you be using?
At the most, a Bobcat, small Bobcat. The, and depending on, on, on the sensitivity of the issue, we could actually do this by hand if we had to.
Could you, I don't think we're going to be up, we're not going to vote on this tonight. We still, you still got to go to ZBA, you still got to go, at least get some CONCOM, and we would like to...
CONCOM.
Yeah, CONCOM is waiting, basically, they kept it open for, in case something was changed at this meeting.
Okay.
They were satisfied with the project.
Do we have anything from them?
I think I'm having you write, but it's still open, and they, when I spoke with the conservation administrator, she still would like some information on the, on the backflow filter.
Yeah, so she was, I gave her that. I did give her that, but the point, the idea of leaving the meeting open last week was in case something changed in this meeting, we wouldn't have to go and do it all over again. So if nothing actually changes in the plans today, then they'll close that meeting tomorrow night.
Okay. Can you give me a sense of how many trees, one you'd be cutting, and then what's left for trees? Because it seemed to me that there was a good amount of trees outside the, outside the fencing.
We're not touching anything outside the fence.
No.
Everything is contained inside the fence. The original appeal would have been basically to clear the area inside the fence, because it is a swimming pool. And the more trees we could take out opens up the pool to the sun and that sort of thing. Jennifer and conservation were concerned that we leave the smaller trees. They didn't have an issue with the larger trees. They were, she wanted me to leave the saplings. And that was it. And like I said, I didn't have, didn't have an issue with the saplings and the younger trees. It's just the larger trees, a lot of them are, a lot of them will drop wood. There's no doubt about that. But they're also, you know, it's not practical to have them around the pool. It's...
The, the trees are unhealthy. A lot of them are very unhealthy. Half of them are dead. I don't know if you guys own pools. I own a pool. Have any trees around them? It's not very good for them. But we located all the trees within the fence area to show them what was there, the size of them, and there's very, very minimal amount of trees being removed. But, yeah, they're, they're shown on the plan, and the size, eight, ten, eight-inch, 10-inch, 12-inch.
The shot, that picture right there is actually a good representation of about where that pool's going to be.
Mm-hmm.
Where that stump is, is, is kind of where we're going to be. We're going to be on the edge, just on the outside edge of that stump.
Yeah.
So it shows you the minimal grade we picked to put it in there.
So you're looking back towards the shed into, towards the, that brook.
So you'll be in the lawn area?
Edge of...
Edge of the lawn area.
Edge of, yeah.
But you can see in this picture too, as we go towards, more towards the location that he had recommended as being less tree disturbance, you can see the, how the, how the slope drastically increases. And you can see that there are trees that would have to come out because they're right, he's talking about going right behind that shed there.
It should be outside the fence area as well.
Anybody else have any questions or comments? Okay, and when do you go before the ZBA?
Tuesday.
Okay. All right. I don't, I think we need to, at least here, I, I've seen the concerns of the peer review. Heard what you've had to say. I mean, generally, the way we do it is that if they raise concerns, you can respond to them, and then if you guys can come to an agreement, great. If not, then we'll just consider your opinion, their opinion, in, in making our decision. But until we kind of, until you guys kind of have that discussion, and until the ZBA grants you something, I don't think we'd be in a position to, to vote on this, at least. That's my thought.
I, I don't think we're going to vote anything for the ZBA vote tonight.
We have time? What's our time schedule?
Plenty of time. Yeah, and the risk is if the ZBA moves it...
Yeah, I, I don't anticipate too much issue with the ZBA. The, that's almost a formality because of the building department considering it a new prominent structure. If you consider it a swimming pool, I wouldn't have to go to ZBA, but it's considered a new prominent structure.
I'm not going to comment on, on that, what they legally require.
I believe in the definition in the bylaw, it specifies a swimming pool is a, is a structure.
An above-ground pool, well, in your bylaws, it may well, yeah. I was, I, I hadn't told the previous building inspector, didn't consider it, you know, so...
Yep.
But it is what it is.
Yeah.
We'll present next Tuesday.
It's consistent with how he's acting since he's...
Okay, so I think I'd like to continue it to our next meeting, but is that the town meeting?
Yes, update, date specific would be June 5th, I believe.
All right. So let's do June 5th. If you could respond and speak with the peer reviewer again, because it would be our intention to try to have voted on...
So you just would like a letter based on a response to them?
Yeah, they just, you saw what they wrote, that they thought there was a better spot, respond to them, either call them and talk with them, or write them something. But we would want something to, to be able to see, at least see something that there was some correspondence, and if you come to an agreement about it, you know, if you're able to convince them that this is a spot, great. If they're able to convince you that there's a different spot, or if you come to some other agreement, then that makes our job a lot easier. If there's a disagreement, then we just have to take both sides into consideration and decide, grant the special permit, grant it in a different location, or don't grant it. We have to just decide all that. The more you guys can agree, the easier our job generally is.
Yeah.
The first time the comments that were submitted, you can of course reply directly to all the questions that...
Sure.
And then, and then come to a agreement that way. And then once a solution is found, he'll indicate that all continues to step in that, and then we'll submit that before the board.
Okay. Great.
And section 2.68, structure does specifically say include private and public swimming pools as a structure.
It doesn't say above-ground versus below-ground?
Doesn't make a distinction.
Okay. Good to know. All right, thank you, gentlemen. What's up? All right, so why don't we move to North Andover Housing Production Plan? Yes, why don't we give that back? But if we could give, if we could take, make a copy, that would be great. We can keep those, fantastic. Thank you for providing those.
All right.
All right. Angela Cleveland is here again from Merribe Valley Planning Commission to present the housing production plan. It was discussed at the last meeting. Some supplemental material was included in the packet related to a study that was done by the Metropolitan Housing Commission, and some school enrollment data was provided as well, if anybody has any questions related to that, or if you have any additional questions for Angela.
And I did look into John's inquiry about how long people are staying, the tenure of people, whether renters or owners, and unfortunately, Mass Housing Partnership didn't, wasn't able to get back to me. I guess they're on a deadline, so, but once I do get that information, I'll make sure, because I'm curious too now. It's always good to have. I mean, it's good information, so, but, yeah, that inquiry has been at least submitted.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Can you talk a little bit about the data? About the school enrollment? I mean, I think that was a really good point that Jen raised, and certainly a point that is heavily discussed and is really a, goes hand in hand with housing is, you know...
Sure.
Costs, and especially with school, which is one of probably the biggest costs we have in, in town. So what kind of data were you able to dig up?
I, I didn't specifically pull the data together. This was pulled together by Jean, so, but based on what I was seeing from the, is it the Northeast, I can't remember their acronym.
Metropolitan.
Oh, you mean the MAPC. I'm sorry. I was, I was referring to the, the Northeast School Enrollment, whatever that, the organization is. I've worked with them in the past, where they do projections where it's showing that North Andover's projections are going down...
Right.
...for school enrollment. So same with MAPC's report. I think that there, throughout our region, we're seeing that, it's a trend that, you know, enrollments are going to be going down. There also is, as I think we talked about last time, that Eric mentioned that, you know, there's not as strong of an association with single-family home, or, excuse me, with multifamily units, two-plus or three-plus, and school enrollment. In fact, the fiscal impact analyses in Westford, which was this most recent case study, showed two different multifamily developments with different school enrollment, with 40B, with affordable units associated with them. So they showed, I believe, one was like 1.2 students, and the other was like 1.7 or something like that. So it, it does, it's, it's, it's varied on the connections between multifamily housing, especially more than one unit, and the number of schoolchildren. So, but I think, and thank you for pulling this out, this is what I was referring to, the school projections that the NESDEC puts together for communities that, that can pay for this data, because this is actually good, good analysis. I actually saw this for Tewksbury as well. But they are showing a decline in, in pretty much every age group through 2020.
And I will say, I met with Jim Mailey, who's the school business manager, I think he might be assistant superintendent, business manager, and so we just had a general conversation about the data he submitted, and in the end, I guess what I proposed to him was, would it be fair to say that, in your opinion, the development is not having an impact on school enrollment? And he said that would be fair to say. We talked a lot about, you know, where it's come from, multifamily housing, a lot of times when it's going through site plan review, and he always reviews those numbers, because the perception is it's going to be much more impactful than what he has found them to be. His concern would be if we developed in a specific area, a lot of development, therefore affecting a school, they'd be much more concerned with that. They would rather have, whether it's a 40B or development in general, spread out. It makes their life easier when it's spread out. But in general, the development is not what was concerning to him. And we talked about, I also went to a conference last week where the NADAC planning director spoke, and NADAC has just gone through a tremendous amount of both multifamily and demo rebuild scenario. So we talked about how there are post-World War II development, and so they have a lot of these small lots, small homes, people are demolishing them, building bigger ones, they're an aging population. And so what's happened is we, they have a lot of people living as either two or one person in a household, and those people are moving out and it's being replaced with school age children. And so for the past several years, I believe he said 10, their enrollment's gone up 100 people per year, every year, and so they are at capacity. He's saying like, it's not just perception, we're at capacity, we are dealing with that now. But 70% of that increase is coming from the turnover in the single-family homes with newer, younger families, and 30% was coming from the multifamily, which they've added a lot of multifamily around the NADAC Mall and in their downtown. They've gone through some real significant zoning changes to allow multifamily by right in certain areas to try to get density around commercial areas. So lots going on, housing is in discussion like statewide right now. It's definitely a very prevalent topic.
I think it was very interesting, oh, I'm sorry, all of the information, and I appreciate for that being included, because it certainly was eye-opening to me in a lot of ways, but I'm, I'm curious about these projections because... I'm, I'm curious about these projections, because I wonder how much, and I don't know Gene or maybe Mr. Corry knows, but I wonder how much this takes into consideration, the developments that have been approved but not yet built. You know, I wonder how much that is, you know, or proposed, like if this Sutton Street building goes in, is that taken into account in these, or, you know, and the development that's going to have housing over on Osgood Street was at the Forgetta Farm. I was, we had the change in it, but I wasn't here when it was originally proposed, things like that. Yeah, I'm just curious, like are those numbers taken into account? Because when I read these plans and I think about the addition of a significant amount of housing and particularly large multifamily developments that will bring in many more residents, right, that already exist, I'm just curious if these projections that show numbers going down take that not yet built but in the pipeline into consideration.
So he's certainly aware of all those, and he does do modeling himself, and he uses the five-year average to come up with these. And you can see toward the middle here, it actually has his model versus actual, and the variance to that, so the bottom line of the middle block. And you can get a sense of what he predicted, using a five-year trend. And all of our site plan reviews, so Princeton Properties, he actually came to the public hearing for that, because it's standard modeling used both by the applicant and himself. They were a little bit disagreement until the applicant talked about their one and two bedrooms, their, you know, the, the marketing is going to this certain type of demographic, things like that. And so he does weigh a lot of those items. My understanding is Berry Farms predicted in the low 50s for students, and now he screwed up the actuals, and again, I believe that is in the low 30s. So it definitely came in under what they were thinking it was going to be.
Yeah, I mean, my kids are at the Sargent's, so we've seen the impact on that, the Berry Farms, on classrooms, you know. I don't know, like, it just, it's, it's interesting to me, because I do think that's a concern of a lot of families in town, seeing these developments go up.
But the point is interesting that it's, the concern may be, you know, are you developing all in one place? Because, and, and at one time, because if you do a lot in one place, yeah, then you have, you open it up and you have a lot of people, okay, 20 kids at one time, it's going to be a one-time thing, and then go five years and it might be somewhere else. So it's interesting to see that as compared to, okay, what is the turnover on single families? And if we do something like an accessory use bylaw and keep people in their homes longer, that means there might be a little less turnover with some of those homes, and a little less of a burden in that regard. So, I mean, it's all, it's all interesting to talk about and to try to plan for, and it's certainly not easy.
And the other, the other thing that struck me is, we've been talking about, and we think the, the public forums said, if you're going to have multifamily, we want it downtown, we want increased density down here and get the businesses going. And so when we had that conversation today, I was kind of thinking, if we were to do all multifamily down here, that's going to affect Thompson and Kittredge, I guess, possibly.
Right, so it is, there is a instinct to cluster those things all in the same place, but there are some costs, and that's why, I mean, for me, downtown, I love the idea of mixed-use development, of commercial and then a couple of units, and that way you're not wasting space, but more you have, you can have artist studios, you can have one-bedrooms, and then you can have a couple of two and three and stuff like that. So you're, you're really serving a wide range and also really kind of, so that's just my personal vision. Okay, so, does anybody else have thoughts that they want to share on the housing plan? Because after we're kind of done, I think, I think you were looking for us to vote to approve the housing production plan, right?
Adopt the plan and, and is recommend to the board of selectmen the same.
Okay. So does anyone have any comments?
I, just one, there's, there's page 633 that I think sort of is a backdoor way of answering the question that, that I asked.
Yeah, I looked at this before. It, I didn't.
It's not exactly the same.
Yeah, exactly.
It's a, it's a roundabout way of getting to the same point.
Yep.
And it's kind of like, when I first looked at it, it was counterintuitive, but then it wasn't. Because after all, how many people stay in their house for, you know, 25 or 30 years? That's, that's really what it comes down to, so.
Yeah, it was just the own, I believe that we had a, the renter characteristics are on page 36, but it wasn't getting quite as fine-grained as you were looking for, so.
Yeah, I mean, it would be, yeah. Because then again, you, in a lot of cases, people move into a house, then move into another house, whereas renters probably move out of the community, you know.
Yeah. So it looks like the majority of people moved into North Andover between, renters between 2010 and 2014.
Yeah.
But that's again, into, or into their unit, I should say. So people are actually staying for quite a while.
Yeah, somewhere, yeah, but, okay. So we approved this. What exactly are we approving? Are we approving the statistics or all the prescriptions and recommendations?
The adoption would be of, of the plan itself, you know, all encompassing the, you know, the data's going to change based on the year. So I, I wouldn't anticipate it's going to change very much, for instance, but, you know, like in 2020, then that, that's why we put the stipulation on page 51, you know, that it needs to be reassessed again after the 2020 census comes out, because this will be smack, nah, and that maybe not in the middle, but close to the middle of, of the relevancy of this plan. But you, yeah, adopting the plan along with the goals and strategies of how you think housing production should roll out in North Andover.
So Gene, what's the manage, how do you have this type of plan to go?
Well, it helps when, if you were to have this certified by the state, and if a 40B application was to come in.
Yep.
This helps to either help locate that 40B, give you more input as to how that 40B would be developed, or when you reach your hurdles and you are in compliance with the 10%, the state will back a denial of a 40B. But before, I just want to make sure, Aaron submitted comments as well, and I want to make sure before it goes into adoption that, Aaron, if you want to talk about any of those in detail, you have that opportunity.
Not in terrible detail here, but, but it just seems like this plan, it, it really is an affordable housing plan. It's, it's a production plan, that's.
Primarily a for.
But I did, I did see there was, you know, there's, there's talk about seniors and disabled, but I really don't see any kind of notes or points, too many points on that aspect. It seems like there's a lot of data, and then there's some talk about the senior aspect, disabled aspect, but, but when it gets down to it, it's all about meeting the 10% over.
Do you think so in the strategies?
Yeah.
So I just, I guess, I didn't understand in the, in, in this production plan, how, how the senior and disabled portion were linked, because it just seems very focused on meeting the 10% guideline.
We actually were heavily focused on seniors and disabled, most like, mostly seniors, but, you know, by nature of some of the recommendations and the strategies, seniors also accommodate some of the disabled appropriations, for instance, universal human design, human-based design, or ADA standards. But, yeah, where our focus throughout this plan was on seniors, really.
Accessory dwelling units wouldn't only possibly, if we could tie those into affordable, would be one thing, but they will also help people age in place. If we lighten up some of the family suite restrictions we have, where it has to be a specific person, it could help with the, maybe your rental income, things like that.
Can you go with the action plan on 58 through 61? Provide support services for elderly to age in place, create a fund that offsets the tax increase for seniors in both single-family homes. I mean, I see this as, as Gene said, this helps us with our 40B projects and being proactive in figuring out where and to place them and restrictions and the ability to potentially say no and stay, you know, get certified and stay, our ability to, to say no to certain projects. But I also think that the, the action plan is really good. It just gives us a number of different ideas to go back to. So when we, after we get through this town meeting and, you know, and we start saying, hey, what are our priorities for the fall and putting in bylaws for next year? We can look to this and say, okay, here are some things that, that we, we said we might want to do. And then we have to take the steps of, of choosing which ones and picking in order and things like that.
Prioritize.
Yeah, this is an action plan. What are we really committing ourselves to here? Is this a pick and choose over, over time?
So it's a five-year plan, and I will say a lot are in sync with the master plan, so I think there's going to be a lot of overlap in terms of these goals. I really don't think there's many that aren't in sync.
Right.
Especially what I think would be the ones that you prioritize, I think they're going to prioritize as well.
But in voting on it, there's nothing we have, just because we accept this doesn't mean we have to do every.
No, no, I, I.
The point is that there are some of these that I'm keen on, some I'm very lukewarm, and there's a few that I don't like at all.
Yeah.
But this is all pretty oratory. It's consider, you know.
Yeah.
Encourage.
Seems like this is something the state needs to move us along. I mean, I think it's, it's a good guidepost for us to look to a document that we can go back to and say, hey, here's the data, we have this data, here's some ideas, let's pick the ones that we want to do and focus on and govern.
And anyone that involves zoning still requires the two-thirds vote at the town meeting.
And anything that requires financing requires town meeting.
John, I do want to point out one to you in case she did not see it. So on page 56, on number 18, in speaking with the Affordable Housing Trust, they had discussed this a few times. For the past several years, the CPC has awarded $100,000 for the Affordable Housing Trust. And we discussed that if there could be an annual award, like an automatic award. And so this, again, uses the word should, it's not has to, or.
I'm not even sure we can.
I don't think they can.
You can do that?
Again, they indicated.
The money has to be appropriated every year at a town meeting, the recommendations. You can't automatically, you can't bind a future town meeting by a vote of a, a certain.
Right, except for like the 10%, which you have to put aside.
Yeah, I mean, you have to put aside, but, you know, we can't, we can't vote at one town meeting to put inside $100,000 every year for 10 years for this purpose.
But can you?
And then bind future.
No, but, but each year, could it be automatic without a application? Is it something that you could?
Well, it takes about 15 minutes, Dave. If they can't, but, I mean, come on.
Communities are doing this, but.
I mean, that's ridiculous.
Yeah. You found that they are as well?
Not in our region, but outside our region they are, yeah. Unfortunately, we, we don't have a lot of communities that are using their CPC funds for housing yet.
Well, it's been great.
They want to, but they haven't.
Cutting on May Street on Saturday, and I am in full support of what you are doing in terms of giving them the $100,000, because it's a great story what's going on on May Street. I mean, four units now funded through that, so. I just wanted you to be aware of it.
Yeah, okay.
I haven't read that before.
So I saw that you had a stat on homeless demographics.
Yes.
But I was just curious, I didn't see, and I may have dismissed it, but in terms of looking at the housing, I didn't see anything else on veterans other than their demographic as.
You'd be right on that, yeah. Unfortunately, that wasn't as easy to find as we thought. There's the Northeast, is it Northeast Veterans Association in Blesso and Haverhill, but unfortunately, there wasn't a lot of data associated with, specifically with this region around that, so. But that's the type of thing that we would love to add in, you know, further recommendations for, for instance, and actually Methuen just did that with their plan.
Just did what?
Added, added a specific recommendation to continue investigating and developing housing specifically for veterans.
So we could add that into the plan. So could we, something along the lines of, you know, work with the veteran's, do we have a veteran's agent? I assume we do. Work with the veteran's agent to identify needs.
Yep.
For veteran housing.
Yep.
Fulfill those.
Yeah.
Well, how, how do people feel about that?
I, I would approve adding that in. It's a worthwhile goal. Anybody else? Yeah, sorry. Let's add that in.
So to identify needs and develop housing appropriately, or?
Yeah.
And, or, yeah, okay.
Something along those lines of just identifying, see if there's an issue, find, you know, a veteran's agent should know all the veterans in town and what their housing needs are. And I know that that's often a key part of their job is, you know, helping with the VA and housing and things like that.
Great.
Seems like healthcare and housing are the two big issues.
Okay. Yeah, and if, if you wanted to add that stipulation as part of that, you know, we could, just so it doesn't delay your vote if you, but if you want to, I understand that too. If you wanted to delay the vote till we added that in here, but you could also.
I think we can just add that in as.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
The vote can be as amended this year.
Yeah, of course.
All right, so does someone want to make a motion to approve the town of North Andover Housing Production Plan, 2018 to 2022?
As amended.
As amended?
To adopt.
Adopt.
Adopted, yeah. Anyone want to make that motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
You?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. So we adopt the plan as amended.
Second one in the region.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
That's a huge deal.
You made a good comeback.
Yeah, that's, that's awesome. So for the next, we'll just work with you on getting on the board of selectmen's agenda so that we can, yeah, okay. Great. Thank you all. This is great. Looking forward to seeing the progress that you made.
Thank you.
Do they need to motion to recommend it to the selectman or anything? Does that affect? No? Okay, very good. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right, moving right along. Let's jump to continued public hearings. So we'll do the annual town meeting zoning bylaw map amendment articles. All right, does anyone have anything to say on any of the other ones other than solar? No, good. All right, let's talk about solar. So I don't know, I, I just, if anyone's gotten a chance, I did a chart today that I thought would be kind of an appropriate, I won't say compromise, but kind of a, maybe a solution to some of the things we've talked about. I don't know if everyone has that in their packet.
Do you have much privacy?
Need to have extras.
Oh, okay.
So these were just my thoughts based on kind of what we talked about. It seemed to me that the concerns, that we wanted to do a couple of things. We wanted to encourage solar. Do you need a copy, Mr. Leir? All right. So we want to encourage solar wherever we can. We want to encourage it responsibly, especially in residential areas. Before, we had small scale that you, I think you couldn't do it as a principal use, and I really wasn't sure why. I mean, I'm not sure why you would want to, but, I mean.
Well, my thinking was that, say, if we're in an economic downturn, somebody owns some land, really don't have any options for it. If they wanted to throw some solar panels on the lot in the meantime, why not? That was just the scenario I was floating in my mind.
And I'm in, I was in agreement. I mean, if we're going to allow a small scale as an accessory use, why not, in a resident, in a business, why not allow it as, in, as a principal use in a business? I mean, I'm not sure why you would have a less than 1,000 foot, or, you know, whatever, or 1,500 feet square feet, or whatever we decided, 1,000 square feet as a principal use, I mean, that seems kind of silly, but if you want to, I don't see the harm. In terms of a residential, I think you should have to get a special permit for the principal use, because you're using a business in a residential area. You know, I think anytime you're going to do a business in a residential area, you should have to at least come up for a special permit. So that's what I did for principal use. For medium scale, I said for, in a residential, again, for special, anything in a, any principal use in a residential, I said special permit. I didn't want to just say no. I mean, I think if someone can, at least my inkling for a large-scale principal use in a residential, I think the answer would be no, because I don't know how you set that up without being unobtrusive to neighbors. But if you have a giant property and you want to make it into a solar and there's nothing around you, maybe there is a scenario that exists. So that's why I said special permit.
It existed at the Brooks Pass.
Right.
Yeah, it existed, yeah.
So I think, I think those are few and far between where that could be, but that's why I said special permit rather than just no. And then for business, I said site plan review, because I think that's something we may want to encourage for business. If that's going to make you money and it's going to be green, then okay, that's, that's good. As accessory uses, I suggest, I think we talked about getting rid of the pole-mounted, so I, I agree with that, give rid of the pole-mounted. Roof-mounted, yes, across the board. Small scale, less than 1,000 feet, yes, across the board, you can, you can do that. And then medium scale and large scale in a residential, I think it should be a special permit. In a business industrial, I said that that could be as of right, and then large-scale special permit. That's just, and then I thought, make 1,000 to 25,000 and then greater than 25,000. I thought those might be good. The only other thing I think that we talked about was height restrictions, and I thought 15 feet might be a good height restriction, I think we talked about, somewhere between 15 and 20. But 15 seemed like, especially if we're getting rid of the pole-mounted, a good, just general height restriction. But fifteen seemed like, especially if we're getting rid of the pole-mounted, a good, just general height restriction. Those were kind of, I think, trying to pull everything that people had talked about and the concerns kind of back and forth.
Great, thank you for doing that, because I just, I, I just didn't have the time to put the effort in and the process. And that's what I mean, I think, just sitting down and rationally balancing all the pieces, I'm glad you did that because that's really what we need and, you know, it makes sense to me, yeah.
Anybody else have kind of?
Well, I went through it and I noticed some definitions I couldn't, that were defined in two-point-seven-eight, I couldn't find in the rest of the document.
Okay.
So.
So we should get rid of those, right?
I, I'd appreciate somebody else looking.
Okay.
And not just canceling.
Take your word for it, bro.
Because I got caught up, some, some of the definitions.
Like that, yeah, you know.
Some of the definitions refer, you help define other terms in the definition, so you got to be careful of that, but.
I'm sorry, just so I understand, so the definitions, you gave example of rated nameplate capacity?
Yeah, I couldn't find that anywhere, so.
That's number two.
No, right, but is it other than, is it anywhere other than definition?
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, I couldn't find it.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Referenced within the.
Right, is, is, are we defining things that aren't actually in the ordinance? If it gives the question.
Probably better than the opposite.
That is true.
So I have to take it out when they, the state would give for the small, medium, and large, or equivalent to a specific number for the rated nameplate equivalent. And once we change those numbers, I don't know what the equivalent was.
Oh, okay.
In that, so I can strike it if you want to strike it.
If it's going to be, yeah. So I think that anything that's not in the, I agree there, and anything that's not actually, we don't actually use, we should take out. I think we'll need to take out anything having to do with the pole-mounted.
Yeah.
So solar energy system pole-mounted, we can get rid of that, and that's also, so, I think that was number eight under the dimensional requirements. Oh, no, the numbers were off, but there's a pole-mounted solar energy system, a height requirement, we can get rid of that paragraph. It's like on the page before the chart. Right before the purpose, right before the purpose section.
Yep.
There's a definition, yeah, pole-mounted solar energy system, and we got to change the numbers, but.
Yep.
But that can be out. And then in the chart, we can just update the chart as reflected.
We remove all pole-mounted.
And remove all pole-mounted, right.
I still have an issue with the purpose paragraph.
Do you want to suggest a amendment?
Yeah, I mean, the premise is promote, regulate, and restrict the creation, construction, operation of solar energy systems. I, I just thought promote, regulate, and restrict really bothers me because I don't think that we're trying to, I think we're trying to regulate. That's probably the one word that I agree with. But I also think that if we're going to use this sort of matrix that was just suggested tonight, which I like a lot, I think in some ways this is also encouraging solar in some areas, and so I don't know if it's promote, encourage, or whatnot, but the, I don't like the word restrict.
Well, I, I think if we go to this matrix, I, there's no longer a blank, there's no blanket restriction on any use. There may be conditions.
Yeah, which is why I like regulate.
So, so what, so what?
Regulates.
What, I mean, do you want to do promote and regulate the creation?
Yeah, I like that.
I don't think this really promotes.
See, I think it does. I think if you have as an, if you have things that are allowed by right, I think that's promoting it. I mean, in the sense that right now you can just do it and there's no restrictions, it's not, but I think.
Promote to me is doing something more than the status quo or the, the current condition, so that's.
But don't you think by bringing a town meeting and by actually discussing it, I mean, I bet there are a lot of people that have no idea about, you know, the, there are regulations, what you can and can't do, even just by talking about it, I think we are promoting it, you know? But I frankly don't really have any, I really don't care that too much about. So if you wanted to say to regulate or promote and regulate.
That'd be my preference, but.
Okay, anybody else?
Not a deal breaker.
I don't care. Peter? Jen, promote and regulate or regulate?
I like promote and regulate, but I, maybe you can be the hybrid.
I'd go with promote and regulate over just regulate, regulate.
I'd go with it.
All right, so let's go with promote and regulate the creation.
Before that, I wanted to, we, in terms of definitions.
Yeah.
I don't think we ever resolved the issue of what surface area.
Yes, I was going to raise the same thing.
Okay.
And the way it's defined here is not what I thought we discussed under six K.
Six K. The amount of area covered by the surface of the solar energy collector.
So what we talked about last time is these collectors are at an angle, and so you measure the horizontal vector, which is less than the full surface area. Because if, if you have an area you're going to cover, you know, like a field or something, you know, you'd think it's, it's that area, but if, if you're measuring this, it's actually much more.
Is it the panel or what the panel covers?
Correct, correct. So imagine rain falling. The rain is not going to impact on this bowl, it's going to impact on just the horizontal vector of that.
So it's still, we want the footprint.
Correct, correct.
So it's just the panel side, the size of the panel?
No.
The ground, you want to call it the ground surface area?
It's the ground, yeah. You would have to measure around the perimeter.
It's the horizontal plane.
Yeah, that's.
Of the sur, of the solar panel.
So, but, but getting.
At what angle?
It doesn't matter, because the horizontal.
It's horizontal.
When it's flat.
Yeah, no, no. If, if a, a panel is angled, which they usually are, they're fixed.
Not all of them are.
No, but, but it doesn't matter.
If it is, they're, they're equal.
Yeah, when it's flat, the surface area of the panel equals the horizontal plane. When it's angled, the horizontal plane is just this part right here.
Okay.
So in my reading, the surface area.
I'm not going to apply to be a math, to be a math teacher.
Math, I checked out, I checked out.
So, so, but the definition for surface area is primarily used in, in sizing, so you could have, in essence, you're saying, if, if you're just, if you're saying that the surface area is the ground footprint.
Yeah.
You can have more square footage of panel surface area just based on.
You will, you will, yeah.
And that, that's your, that's your.
But isn't that, but.
But, but when we talked to the experts at the previous meeting.
Because they can always tell them different ways, you know, it, I mean, I'm not, I'm probably the least big advocate of this, but I think the, the horizontal thing's the only way, fair way to do it. I mean, you know, because otherwise you would make the thing way too small if you just did the surface of the panels.
Is, I mean, do you risk a really big panel that doesn't have a big footprint?
But, 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 but the point ends up being is that if you take verticals, the ultimate, that would be the ultimate. The problem is they wouldn't work then.
Right.
It's got to be, you know, probably relatively, I don't know, Dan, help me out, what, what slope, what typical slope is the slope that you would put a panel?
Twenty degrees.
Twenty degrees, okay.
Thoughts on, I mean, I wanted, I just want to make something that's easy to do, too.
Yeah.
I, I think, so if I could recommend one thing here, it would probably be to fall back on the, on the state's model bylaw definitions. Because I think if, if we follow where we changed from the state's model bylaw, as the, the, the square footage came down, it was based on the idea of, let's just add up, like Mr. Boynton said, let's just add up the surface area of all the panels as if they were flat or however, and, and that's how I think.
If the state doesn't define surface area, we have to add that in.
Exactly, the state doesn't define it.
Okay.
So the, the state defines ground area.
Something that's.
Yeah, so the state.
Ground area is the same as the horizontal plane.
Yeah, so is there a definition for ground area that we can use?
Well, it's not the same as ground, as horizontal plane though in the state definition, because the, so we're, in, right now, we're talking about the solar panels themselves. The state talks about special permitting for a, a, a solar array that's bigger than an acre as being large, so forty thousand square feet. Because on forty thousand square feet, you can typically put your panels in an angle, so a forty thousand square feet is two-hundred-and-fifty kilowatt, right? And that's what the state.
Well, we're going a little lower. I, I think, Peter, your definition is fine. I think it's the, you know, it's, it's the horizontal, I mean, you could.
You can either say the ground footprint or the horizontal plane, they're the same thing.
Yeah, I think if you say that, then I think it would be fine.
And would it be?
Peter, can you just tell me what you wanted to say?
Well, it would say.
The horizontal?
The solar energy system surface area, the horizontal plane or ground footprint covered by, it's, it, it would continue. It's the horizontal plane or ground footprint covered by the surface of the solar energy collectors.
Yeah.
That's it.
And would it be the cumulative of all in a, in your, on your parcel?
So the cumulative horizontal, you just said cumulative before?
Yeah.
Are they the same?
Well, there's two ways to, to measure the cumulative. One is, what is the outer perimeter of the array? Like, let's say you have fifty arrays, you just go around the edge, what is that total area of land occupied by panels and the spaces between the panels? That's one way to measure the cumulative. The other is you actually add up the separate horizontal planes.
I'm probably more inclined to do the outside perimeter just because it's easier.
For the cumulative, I would agree.
Yeah, the, the outside perimeter.
Outside perimeter of the array.
If they're all stacked at angles, they're not the ones that tilt or move.
What you would do is you would take a tape measure, go, it's eighty feet this way, a hundred feet this way, therefore it's eight, eight thousand.
So, I mean, to be precise, that outer perimeter is the cumulative area of the land or parcel containing it. And that's different than the cumulative area of the surface panels. Because there's space between.
Yeah, there's space between.
I don't know that you have to make that distinction, but there is.
But I mean, I would say, you know, the, yeah.
Well, so, right, so it's a question of if you have, if you have five in a row, do you just take each one and add them up?
Right.
Or do you take the whole?
I think you have to take the outer perimeter because.
Now, what, the only, just to play devil's advocate, what if you have one here and one here?
Well, the, the thing is, I.
Good point.
Wait, is this, is this dealt with in the, the state model, KISDN, and how do they?
We could just, I mean, we could just leave it.
I, I mean, you, you, you're right, at some point you could have something that, for example, you could have something that might be separated by a hundred yards or something like that. In that case, in my mind, they're two separate arrays.
Then why don't we just say cumulative and leave it?
Based on the extra perimeter. I mean, I, 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 I think what's going to end up happening is if we get into a hard case, we'll just go and, you know, we'll have to interpret it on our own. I mean, you know, just put a reasonable definition that's.
And it would only be a.
You know, that's what I mean, ground footprint is intuitive and obvious.
Yes.
Yeah, and leave it at that, and then, you know, we can worry about special cases.
So then let's, so let's say cumulative without defining.
Right, yeah.
What that exactly means, cumulative.
I have, I have the cumulative horizontal plane or ground footprint covered by the surface area of the solar energy collectors.
Yeah, I think if you do that, that'll be.
It's going to come into play if, if it, if the difference between the individual versus the perimeter knocks it up into the next category.
And that's when, all right.
So how are the ground footprint and the horizontal plane the same?
Because.
Because, I mean, if they're always like this.
If, if they're always at an angle, right, the horizontal plane is this, which is the same as the ground. The ground is a horizontal plane, it's just lower.
But I mean, if it's like a poster, I mean, like, if it's, the footprint, the thing could be like this, come up with a much larger piece on it, no?
Well, you're measuring the larger piece, not the thing at the bottom.
But if it's always at an angle, it would fit into a smaller space than if it was flat.
Correct.
So why would it have, right, am I?
But the horizontal.
What we're saying is we just measure the smaller space, I think is what.
That's where you measure the smaller.
Right, but you were saying the horizontal, okay, never mind, okay.
I think it's, okay. I think it's good enough. I mean, it, will it be perfect? No, will we probably have to come back to it? Maybe, but I think it, I think it's, I think it's good.
Yeah.
I think it's good, and Dan's not going to speak out against it.
No, it's, it's just, it's just important to know that by taking that definition and not using the way the state did it, because I think the state already had this discussion, and they, they did it in the model bylaw the way they did it, but by, by going this route, it, it accomplishes the same thing. The only thing it changes, though, is it's saying that we're going to have smaller triggers to go to.
Wait, wait, you're, but you're dealing with a different issue. Your issue is the levels we pick for the, the ten, twenty-five, and fifty, that's a totally different topic. So if your issue is with that, that's fine, we just want to use something different, that's all. And that's fair enough, we didn't use what's the state law, we, we thought our numbers are better and based on a bunch of other towns, right?
Yeah, we started out with that, and it's not necessarily other towns, it was the scale of over an acre in a residential zone, just.
Is what it was. So I mean, that's, that, that's what we picked, so that's, we, we just picked different numbers, that's all.
So can I ask you a question that, that you're up there? Putting aside the, the scale, right, the, the actual numbers that we picked, what we're doing for our surface area, like how we're defining this definition that Peter just very helpfully came up with, I could never hope to articulate, is that somewhat consistent with the state model, or is that, do you see any issues with that definition that we've just landed on that we might not be considering?
Gene, I thought you said the state did not define.
I made up this definition because it came into play when we were looking at the pole mounted, and I wanted to.
Exactly, that was my, that was my point, yeah.
And whoever was here a meeting or two ago said that it's not defined and therefore boards interpreted differently.
It was vague, and that's why we decided to put something in. Okay, sorry, thank you.
Yeah, that, that was.
That's why we decided to fine-tune it tonight, because it could be interpreted differently, he was afraid.
So it, I think it's fine to fine-tune it, it's also fine to just fall back on the state's definition to simplify it.
Of surface area?
Of ser, no, of not having surface area of what, how many square feet of ground.
Okay, all right.
That's, yeah, see, it's not a definition, you're, we got it, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, and so I, and I had said in here, because I know, I know we had talked about a thousand, twenty-five, I went to twenty-five thousand, instead of forty thousand, I mean, does that seem okay to everyone?
Yeah.
That's fine, yeah.
All right, so I think that's, I think we have a solar bylaw.
Aaron, have we gone through all of them?
I have one more comment, and it was, in, in the spirit of promoting solar, there was in, let's see, six, two, eight, there was a prohibition on front yard citing, and I, you know, it probably wouldn't look too great, but if, if a homeowner has no other option, I think we should at least have, 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 let them have the opportunity to bring it before the planning.
They can go to the ZBA.
Yeah, and I will say in the state model zoning, they did use that as an example of how that wouldn't be unreasonably restrictive if it was no further than the front building line. I'm going back a lot of months, but I believe that was the case in the model zoning line, and it's consistent with other dimensional things in our bylaw, so pools can't be further than the building line. I think there might be a couple others, that sheds fall into that, but absolutely, if you, if you want them to have to come before you or ZBA.
I'd rather do it as a, a, the ZBA, when you're not us.
Yeah.
If it turns out we've misjudged and fifty people are coming, then maybe we'll change it, but I.
It's, it's, it's a low probability condition, without question.
Okay.
I, I just had a question about format. On the second page, it goes from, you know, GH, I, J, K, number seven, then there's the boldface, then it goes to number two, then it goes back to seven.
Those were, those were definitions other places, so those were, those definitions are in the bylaw.
Okay.
As numbers two and number seven, and we're just amending what's in there.
Thanks.
So identified by text, which is added as underlined.
Okay.
And seven should now read as, that's, seven's being added in total, it's all underlined.
They're being added to another section.
Okay.
Gotcha, okay.
Aaron, I'm sorry, the rooftop piece, can you just speak to that?
Oh, yeah, yeah, well, yeah, we're, we're.
Check yours off as I go.
I, I just, for a, a roof-mounted solar array, I, I just didn't know what the practicality was of, of having a height restriction. Maybe Dan could help me with this, because I just don't see that there would ever be a desire for and someone to, to almost create a structure to mount panels high above their roof.
I think it could, I mean, I, I think, like, if, I'd just be worried about someone putting a giant pole up right up the top of their roof. And that would be super ugly, but it would collect a lot of sun, you know?
This actually came up with the Osgood, similar, for the roof-mounted Osgood, would it be covered by the?
Parapet.
The par, yeah, parapet.
Yeah.
So that was a concern of the board at the time, and the answer was. So that was a concern of the board at the time, and the answer was it would be covered by the parapet, but it gets to, you know, the visual aesthetic.
I don't want a solar company, or, I mean, a cell phone company saying, we're putting up a solar array, it's a hundred-foot cell tower.
You get in a very prohibitive, by doing that, you get in a very prohibitive, uh, structural, uh, modifications to the underlying structure to be able to.
Yeah, no, you're right, I mean, I think it's, I think it's, I think it would be the complete exception for someone to come up with it, but I think it's pretty easy to live within our two feet, just put, I mean, your normal solar panels on your roof aren't gonna be more than two feet high, if you're just doing normal stuff.
And it's somewhat consistent, when people go through site plan review, usually if the mechanical equipment's gonna be on the roof, we ask for screening around that, just, again, it's all aesthetic. But Dan, early on, talked about some type of heating, cooling type solar that would be higher.
Yeah, I, I personally think that this is, um, should, should not be included, the, the two-foot height restriction. I think there's private practical limits as to how high you can put something on a roof. But, um, I gave some examples in the, in the, I, I put together a, a couple-page document that I, I passed in about a month ago, showed some examples of different types of rooftop systems that might be over two feet. The, the important thing to remember is that this bylaw is covering not just photovoltaic like the Osgood system, but also solar hot water and other types of, uh, uh, energy systems. So, a, a solar hot water system would very likely be more than two feet, it'd probably be, could be six feet, um, on top of the.
I mean, the problem, Dan, is I think you're on any limit, but you're not trying to tell us what's a reasonable sort of thing.
John, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm here because I, I want the town to have a successful bylaw.
Well, yeah, I know that, but you're, you, you, you want, because you're in business, you want something that's basically no restrictions at all.
Residential roof, though, and an, and an industrial roof, right? I mean, because a residential, would you wouldn't want something that was six feet? I mean, you know, somebody who's got a, you know, a peaked roof and puts panels on it would be one thing, you could see the two feet. But if it was a business with a flat roof and a parapet, yeah, it could be six feet and be okay, is that what you're saying?
Uh, or with, yeah, exactly, even without, so, I, on a, on a commercial flat roof, it would be common to see a, a solar hot water system that, that's four to six feet tall, um, on.
So don't you just make the distinction between residential and commercial, or just say special permitted? Or, I mean, because it doesn't, it doesn't seem unreasonable to have a heating system on a roof with a parapet, and it's not, I mean, that's.
I mean, I mean, you could either do it that way and say, if you wanna go above two feet, then you need some sort of special permit, or, um, I mean, it could be, is it, is the issue two feet above anything else? I mean, if you already ha, if, if it's a flat roof with, you know, a wall that goes ten feet high, then yeah, sure, who cares? But it, it's two feet above anything else, is at least what I was picturing.
I know, it's greater than the main roofs of any building, so I, I don't think we're in that. I mean, the main roofs, that, then you're not comparing it to other structured buildings already.
Right.
But I mean, we could, if it's a commercial-only thing, we could say, we could sort of do different heights for residential and commercial.
I mean, because that's really is the issue, you don't want some huge thing on someone's house in the middle of a neighborhood, right?
Well, I don't think you want necessarily anywhere, I mean, if it's gonna be blocking sightlines and stuff like that, depending.
I mean, then maybe it is special permit, because, I mean, you could see lots of applications where, like, on top of a store or a building, you know, that it just wouldn't make any difference, like, it's, some of the buildings that are in front of the airport, you know, what difference would it make if there was something six feet there? Oh, well, airport probably isn't a good example, because there's certain value restrictions for that, but I mean, aesthetically, visually, I mean, that's what you want.
Well, I mean, what you could do is go back to, anything on a roof has to be an accessory use, right? By definition.
I would think so.
So, we're already covered on the large ones.
I mean, roof-mounted is allowed by right, the question is how high?
Right, yeah, I mean, you, what you could argue is, oh, ground, okay, yeah, the, uh.
We don't even have roof-mounted as a principal use, yeah, so it's just as an accessory.
Yeah, it would be the accessory use, so the question ends up being is, now, this is where we end up complicating it. Is, I, I'd be more inclined to keep a limit of, uh, two, do we have the right to waive anything in this?
I think we did.
You know?
I think we said we could waive that.
Because the problem ends up being is, if you move away from a limit, you can end up with something on a commercial structure that is not at all what you intended, where you actually really want site plan review, but I don't think we're at the point yet where we wanna take this roof-mounted thing and strip out and create a separate table and section for it, uh, and say that if it's, if it's more than a certain height and a certain area, we, it has to come back for, uh, for the review. It almost feels to me we ought to try it, see if it works, and if it doesn't work, we can, we can waive it, or we can change it.
I like the idea of a waiver, I mean, you could just, if you had a six-foot, um, uh, water, you know, solar, solar system, and it's in an area, and say this, it has to be four feet, and it be in the public interest, because I'm, you know, not using electricity, then you can consider it, and it would just require a waiver, it wouldn't require anything else other than a form to submit a waiver.
That makes sense.
And, and the analogy of that is frankly, is, if we see a few of those, we can modify the thing a little bit better, you know? But at least just some flexibility, you know, generally, I'm not a super big fan of waivers, because it, but given that we're in a new area, we, at least, that will deal with the circumstance where somebody's doing something pretty benign, and we're restricting them from doing it, so.
I can make a suggestion, so.
Yes.
However, no roof-mounted solar energy system shall exceed this height, with the excep, what if we add with the exception of solar thermal system? Is that the only type of system?
But, but I don't think it matters what type it is, if it's gonna be ten feet tall, I don't wanna necessarily allow it, just because it's a thermal system.
So then the waiver provision is for submittal and design requirements today? And before, we talked about not including dimensional there, because then you just have to waive everything, so.
Yeah, just for that, yeah.
So, um, so where, where is, where do we have the height restriction?
The height restriction is number seven of the ones Peter pointed out, I'm sorry, number two, so page two.
Could we add a sentence at the end of this that says, you know, business, commercial, industrial can apply for a waiver of this height restriction? I mean.
I mean, what, I mean, residential might want a.
Might want two, because there might be one, but I think, uh, yeah, I, what I would do is, I would just put, like, a request for a waiver for, for any, any of the uses now, for that height restriction, and then, if we don't get any, then we, then we know it probably is the right level. If we do get some, we may change the thing from two feet to something different based on what we're seeing.
So, so where it says, however, no roof-mounted solar energy system shall exceed, um, two feet in height.
Unless a waiver is granted?
Yeah, unless a waiver is granted by a majority of the board.
The, 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 yeah.
So what if they're not coming to you, so by right for roof-mounted, that's by right?
But they can't, but, but here, it's, they can't do it.
Okay, so.
If it's less, if it's less than two feet, they're fine, but if it's more than two feet, they're not compliant, so they have to.
So what are they applying for, through site plan review?
No, they just have to come for a waiver.
Apply for a waiver of this provision.
Okay.
It's kinda like similar to some of the minimum, um, you know, uh, I think we do sometimes for watershed special permissions, like an emergency, you know, I mean, we could facilitate.
Yeah, I see it like, like asking for any substantial change, you say, I'd like a waiver of section two. You show your plan, you come in, say, hey, I have like a waiver, I have this, it's not gonna bother anyone, here's what it looks like, yea or nay.
Can I just clarify that, um, the roof-mounted solar energy system, is that just the, the modules? Or is that the inverters as well, other distribution equipment, that would be on a roof?
Solar energy system is definition six, if you wanna read that.
So.
Do you have it on your laptop? I'm sorry, you can go to number six. It's right there, Dan. And that's from the state.
So, yeah, so exactly my point, this is where, um, components of that might be presumed to be in this definition. So would components of a solar array not be able to be over two feet? Would be a question I'd ask a building inspector, I'm not sure how they'd answer it.
To be determined, I guess.
So we, we can't, we can't let that go. I mean, I, I mean, so it's gonna be very common, even for, like, Osgood, we've got inverters that are three feet tall, um, amongst the, the, the one-foot-tall solar panels, um, everywhere, we've got a hundred and nineteen of them. So that, that's an example, there's gonna be distribution panels, um, what's called string combiner boxes, that typically you want them to be over two feet, because that's, you want them to be able to, above the snow level, that's almost a standard. So, not to make it complicated, I don't.
Are you suggesting, um, roof-mounted solar energy collectors, so, instead of solar energy?
Yeah, collectors is a better definition, if, I mean, if that's the intent, is to keep, if it's perceived that they're aesthetically a problem, and you wanna keep below two feet, then it's usually not that the, the distribution equipment's the aesthetic problem.
I don't think technology is ugly.
But I don't mind, I actually don't mind the look of solar panels, for the most part, but there can be.
Should cut it back to that picture.
Yeah, I know, there can be some.
Like wind turbines.
I don't mind wind turbines, actually. I think they're kinda cool, and they're nice, like, old-fashioned windmill.
Yeah.
We have solar collector, so.
There's now gonna be a hundred-foot tall ones.
Do we need to make, um, change there, or no? No roof-mounted.
Solar energy system.
So do we wanna make it solar energy, or solar, and, solar collector? So that's the panels themselves versus the equipment. Yeah, I guess I don't have a problem with it being no roof-mounted solar collector.
It's fine, thanks.
Okay, all right, we win this one. Solar, let's change that to solar collector, then. All right.
Okay, so what is the height that you?
I think two feet, right? Two feet, two feet, two feet, twenty-four inches.
Okay. So the height on number seven of ground-montage, whether it's small, medium, or large, I think we're talking.
Yes.
I think thirteen to fifteen, you were previously?
Uh, fifteen, please.
Fifteen, everybody agree?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's some more of those, so, number eight goes away.
Eight goes away, yeah.
So on dimensional regulations eight fourteen point six, I should have these pages numbered. So the roof-mounted. That's gonna change to, however, no roof-mounted solar energy collector.
Yeah, shall exceed twenty-four inches in height, or two feet, however you wanna do it.
Two feet, you want me to add the waiver provision as well?
Uh, yes, same language. Eight fourteen six B will be fifteen feet. And C will be deleted.
Okay, and setbacks, we talked very briefly about in the past. Again, this is somewhat recommended by the state.
So it's side and rear setback, or at least double setback that would otherwise apply?
Right, it would be half of the regular setback, so in our one, two, and three, I believe, side and rear is thirty feet, front's thirty feet as well, but then, they can't go there. In our four, it is twenty feet, so half would be ten, but this puts it at a minimum of fifteen in the R four zone, which is the smallest lot size.
So what's the smallest?
It's twenty feet is the required setback.
Yeah.
This would, this is either half that distance, which would only be ten, or fifteen at a minimum.
I, I like fifteen at a minimum.
So that, that really accounts for R fours, the matches.
Fifteen at a minimum?
And it's, so it, in effect, it does the same in R two and three, because there's this thirty, it would be fifteen, by default.
Yeah, let's do fifteen at a minimum.
So for the large-scale ground-mounted, again, these, I, I think I took this from looking at several other bylaws, so.
Yep, and C would.
Seventy-five and a hundred.
Yep, and C would be deleted.
Yeah.
All, all is the same.
Lot coverage we agreed to.
Did we already make the change about, um, the financial?
We have not.
Okay.
So we talked about it.
So that's, uh, eight point fourteen, ten, three.
And again, if my recollection is correct, this is not in the state auto zoning, however, it was in several other bylaws, and I think this language is specific to Beverly's.
Right, so if we could make that applicants of a large-scale ground-mounted solar energy system may be required to provide.
So, system may be required.
And, and nothing, and, I'm just gonna go back to my chart. Can we, and we can require that as part of site plan review?
Council has reviewed this, this section.
As long as we can make that a condition of site plan review, um, if we want to, I mean, I know we can, as a special permit.
I, I can't answer that tonight.
Yeah, I mean, the only other thing would be is if we make all large-scale special permit. I'm not, frankly, I'm not really worried about the bonds, so.
I'm not, yeah, again, I think that's something we could deal with, just.
Yeah, let's, um, so let's just make it a may.
Okay.
Okay, now have we voted on this?
You have, you voted to be made at town meeting.
Okay, so the vote will be made at town meeting.
And I would have to incorporate these changes in the planning board report.
Okay.
And then at the motion meeting, I would imagine you'd want the motion to be as reflected in the planning board report and on the screen.
Yes.
And so the planning board report, I would, um, use the warrant as the base and show it as strike through.
Right.
And insert it within the lines.
Okay. And then I assume that at town meeting, we'll make an explanation of the whole thing, and then the changes we made, and.
Right.
Okay.
And why you made them. And then I will just ask that when you do a motion, if I could have Aton review this one time to catch it before I go to print on the planning board report.
Okay.
So, if everybody's comfortable with him.
Yeah.
I just want another set of eyes on it, at this point, last minute.
All right, cool, uh, anything else, minutes?
Motion goes broken now. For April seventeenth.
August second.
All in, motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all right, so, before we adjourn, our next meeting is at the town meeting, correct?
And so this hearing is remaining open until just prior to town meeting, nothing else will be on that agenda.
Okay.
Um, and then at that meeting, you just have to remember to close this public hearing.
Okay, so all the, the public hearing, as to the annual town meeting zoning bylaw, map amendment articles, will be continued until Tuesday, May fifteenth? Is that the date, Tuesday, May fifteenth?
And that's typically held at six-thirty, so it's an earlier start.
Likely to be at six-thirty. Everyone's available for town meeting, yes, yes, all be there, okay, fantastic. Uh, can we get a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good.
Thank you.
Good meeting, thank you, Dan.